These questions comes as a, in general, as a first come, first served. And we have a panel here who kind of screened a question for us. And if, if questions are not clear, or if the questions are directed to one person, we should or would not ask that question. So, there's a first question from the, the audience. And Mr. Michael Danielson, you'll be the first one to respond. Can each candidate talk about your education background? Can each candidate talk about your education background? And you have one minute to respond.
Thank you. I was born in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and therefore, my father was a university professor at the University of Michigan. And so it was my dream to be in the Michigan marching band as I was growing up. So, I, I have a double major in music performance and music education from the University of Michigan. And then I moved out to California to be a freelance trombone player, to be a trombone player in studios and orchestras and things like that, which I did for ten years. And then during that time, I also did master work. I started some at Cal State Northridge and then went to USC. And that's my background.
So, Jason Lee.
Yes, I was an English literature major in college. I studied Shakespeare, anyway, name it. So, in the United States, I have spent a lot of years in schools, I have a master's degree in Germanism. And after that, I, you know, I went over to work for the BBC in London. And I have also a master's degree, a master of laws degree from UCLA. And UCLA is around here. And a second master of law degree from University of Michigan, we are around here. And I've also obtained a pure doctorate degree from University of Iowa. I've studied negotiation at Harvard Law School. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you so much, sir, for the question. I think everyone has an incredible educational background. So, I want to share that I grew up in Midwest in Chicago. So, I went to a very close school in Michigan, which is called the University of Wisconsin. I attended medical school there as well, too. When I went there, I was a graduate in magna cum laude, five beta kappa. Finished undergrad in three years, went to medical school. After that, I did my training in cardiology, and I'm actually a trained cardiac electrophysiologist. So, when I went to Iraq, Afghanistan, you know, it was really, really challenging taking care of, like I said, our wounded service members. But when I came back stateside, I was offered a position as a professor at the USC Keck School of Medicine, where I taught a lot of our currently practicing physicians in our San Gabriel and Los Angeles community.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, the next question will be first answered by Jason. What specific proposals can City of Arcadia do to improve citizens' health? Especially for the seniors? What specific proposal can City of Arcadia do to improve citizens' health, especially for the seniors?
I think we need to further strengthen those programs for the seniors. Basically, I think the medicare decision is a private decision. Each individual has her own situation that needs to be tailored with a specific, with specific programs. Again, when people, especially the seniors, when they are sick, I think they need to first think of their own family physicians. And I don't think the city should get involved in the, this private healthcare decision-making process at all.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you so much for the question again, Dr. Wong. Healthcare is so important, like I said, because of COVID. And we are really fortunate that as of July 1, Arcadia Methodist is now USC Arcadia Hospital. What does that do for us? It's incredible what it does for us. And what I mean by that is, as I mentioned previously, I was a professor at the USC Keck School of Medicine. So, we have incredible talent of healthcare professionals that are going to be coming to the hospital to really give our community an academic-level hospital right in our backyard, number one. Number two, the city itself, and if I can be elected, would be able to work from a city to the hospital to the university standpoint, where we can work together to build health fairs, health education, and health programs. So, I think this is just a wonderful opportunity to improve the healthcare of our city.
So, a health question. Anyway, the, I really like the fact that there have been a number of health fairs in this room. In fact, I attended one just a couple of weeks ago, and I know there's another one coming up in later, I believe it's later October. So, we are having health fairs in our city to try to bring health and well-being to different people. I think, too, something the city is doing is we have a mobile truck that's been coming in. It's only one day a week at this point, because we're sharing it with a couple of other communities. But they are dealing with, with mental healthcare emergencies. And you would think that a lot of those are things from people on the street, but actually, more than half of them are people in their homes, because they are experiencing some, you know, psychological and mental issues and stuff. So, keeping up with programs like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will be first answered by Mr. Michael Cowan. What are you going to do about Asian hate or hate crime? Let me repeat, what are you going to do about Asian hate or hate crime? You have one and a half minutes.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wong. You know, this question is a question that unfortunately, you know, we have to answer. It really shouldn't be happening to any American, because we're all Americans. And when one American gets attacked, all Americans get attacked. And what we really have to think about is our nation is a democracy. It's, it's made of wonderful people. So, what we really need to emphasize is that, you know, we need to look at each other as Americans. And we really need to let people know that we need to be able to have a voice and fight back against this. How is that? Well, it's because of the fact that, you know, as a United States Air Force veteran, you know, defending our country, that is what we are. We're Americans. So, we have to be able to work together, we have to communicate, we have to be able to build a team where we don't let this happen to any American. And, and that's really kind of the point that we have to take home from this, is that we're the year 2022. I mean, this, this shouldn't be happening to any sector of, of Americans. And so, really, you know, we, we need to work together, have a voice, and be able to develop policies that, that doesn't allow this to happen. Thank you.
I'm so distressed at when I heard about so many of the Asian hate crimes, especially that were directed toward innocent people that were somehow being related to the pandemic. And I, I'm just appalled that that has happened. But I really think that, in any case, we do have to open the, open dialogues at all levels of our society. We've got to talk about it in our schools, we've got to talk about it in forums, where we're really being a lot more aware of not only the major stories, but the, the microaggressions that we, that we visit on each other. And whether it's a look, or a comment, or something like that. So, education is such an important piece of making sure that people understand that this isn't the first time things like this have happened. You know, we had in the, all through the 1900s, we had historical events where, where, you know, even at our own racetrack, it was a, you know, detainment center for Japanese people. And then there were horrible hate crimes against the Chinese workers that were building the railroads earlier in that century. So, this is not, it is not something new, but it is something that we really have to stand against. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Danielson. Mr. Jason Lee, please. You have one and a half minutes.
I think we first need to educate the Americans about the constitutionally guaranteed right as Asian Americans. Everyone is equal under the law. In this country, we need to, again, to heighten the awareness of this constitutional guaranteed equal right among our people. Secondly, all Asians need to be united. We need to, we need to pull our resources together to fight crimes. Thirdly, we need to enforce the laws on the books. We need to punish the criminals. We need to hefty, we need to deal out hefty punishments to those culprits, so that they will be deterred from committing the same crimes over and over again.
The next question will be addressed first by Mr. Michael Danielson. What other resources would you provide in the Arcadia City Council to benefit the veterans? What other resources would you, since it's a dance, but actually, would you either advance or provide in the Arcadia City Council to benefit veterans? One minute, please.
Sure. Right now, there are programs where we are acknowledging veterans for their service. And, you know, I'm so happy to have one right next to me. And I think raising, again, awareness of, of what the veterans have done on behalf of our freedoms in this city. I know that we do have, it's not sponsored specifically by us, but we are a part of the, the ceremony that happens in our park during, at Memorial Day. And just, again, raising the awareness that, that our freedoms were not free and that, that there are people that we can support, especially the ones that are at the, toward the end of their lives. I know that our, our city clerk is, you know, a Vietnam veteran and has done some wonderful things in bringing up just the, the fact that we are acknowledging them and just thanking them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason Lee.
I think in addition to participating in the annual Memorial Day celebrations that honor the veterans and pay respects to the veterans and their families, I think our, our city need to basically, again, educate our residents about the contributions the veterans made to our country defending the freedom and defending this, this great country. We basically, we need to provide additional benefits in various ways to, again, help the veterans and their families, because they have contributed so much to, you know, the freedom that we enjoy here at home.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. You know, I want to say that in the United States, only 0.4% of the general population serves in the United States military. And that 0.4% is those individuals, for instance, Raymond Chung over there, who's also served Iraq, Afghanistan on the school board. You know, veterans, we, we put our life on the line for our country. So, because of that, I think that we definitely need to honor veterans. What do we need to do? The first thing that I already did last year was I brought in Operation Gratitude, which is a national program that recognizes and honors veterans and first responders, as well as police officers. The second thing we need to do is we need to acknowledge them and honor them and let them know that they feel welcome. Vietnam vets were not treated the same as Iraqi vets. And so, we really want to make sure that they know that, you know, their sacrifice is appreciated and not in vain. So, I think it's so important to honor our United States veterans, as well as any other veterans from any other countries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be first answered by Jason. Arcadia is facing water shortage. What solutions do you propose to solve this problem if elected? You have one minute.
Okay, 70 years ago, 80 years ago, we were more worried about floods. That's why we had, we have so many washes extending from north to south across Arcadia. And the idea of the day was to release the rainwater coming out of the mountains to the ocean as quickly as possible. But now, we no longer have floods. We have droughts in the last 20, 30 years. So, we need to reinvent the system. The system is too old, it's outdated. So, we need to rebuild infrastructure to capture the rainwater in the winter months and use it in the summer time. Additionally, we need to recycle the gray water. You know, basically domestic gray water and reuse it for at least irrigation purposes in Arcadia. So that I will keep our lungs green, so that the trees will, will not die in Arcadia, so that we will remain in Arcadia and not becoming like San Bernardino County, like desert.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir. The water shortage is definitely, you know, a huge issue for all of us. And I think that there's a lot of things that we can do as residents and we can do as a city. The first is, obviously, is what can we do? We need to really think about putting in native plants, drug-resistant landscaping. The other thing that we should improve on is distinguishing between drinking water and irrigation water. Because irrigation water is definitely something that, you know, one of the things I would not really utilize to the fullest extent. We need to educate. And then lastly, you know, in our society today, I think we get more things done if we incentivize people as opposed to penalize people. And I think that that's something that we need to look into as well, too. So, I think these are multiple ways that we can address this crisis that we have with the water shortage.
Next, Michael Danielson, please.
Our city has been very good in locating other sources of water. And when water goes on sale, because they actually do have water going on sale. And we're, we actually saved about a million dollars by getting some water from another water source near us. And it also made us less dependent on the water that is coming through. As you know, that parts of, of our neighborhoods to the west and some to the east had, were down to one day of watering or no days of watering. And the reason that we were able to cut back to only two was because, first of all, our, our people have been very responsive to cutting their usage. But also, because we had looked ahead and gotten those sources early, it made it possible that we could still function with less restrictions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Danielson. Next, Jason Lee.
He spoke first.
Motion. Okay. All three answered, right?
Yes, he, he spoke first.
Okay. Our next, next question will be answered by Michael Danielson.
Okay.
How will your work, how will you work to improve traffic safety, particularly around schools? You have one minute.
We have some individuals in the city that are keeping really close tabs on traffic patterns around the, around the schools. I know that Ringo Swin is out there developing models and, and traffic patterns. And that's really a great thing that our community is getting involved. But in addition to that, we do have people in the city that are tasked to actually look at all the patterns and to try to make sure that the flow is correct and that the safety is there. I know with one of the big building projects that's coming up in the downtown area, they have, you know, full projects that have identified all of the traffic flow, flows in, flows out, and any issues. But I know that some of the new constructions have really impacted some of the people that are living on cul-de-sacs, and they have to get into major traffic flow patterns. It's been very difficult for them. So, just continuing to study and then, and then making good decisions about traffic flow patterns in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Danielson. Next one is Jason Lee, please.
During my canvassing the voters, I discovered that there's a lot of speeding going on on some of the thorough streets like South Second Avenue, South Sixth Avenue, Eighth Avenue, Mayflower, and San Anita. So, basically, we need to install electric monitoring mechanisms and to issue citations to those who are speeding. So, once they get a ticket, you know, a few times, and get fined a few hundred dollars each time, I think they will slow down. And because the speeding really causes safety problems for kids, for pedestrians, for other people. So, we, we, so those are the suggestions that I'm making. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Cowan, please.
And earlier, you know, I mentioned about public safety, and I would mention is one of the issues we're having is police retention. So, because of that, you know, we don't have enough police officers, and therefore, we don't see as much traffic, police covering our city. And so, that is something that I think, when you look at it from a city perspective, that's something that can help improve the safety of traffic around schools. The second is that we do need to kind of reevaluate our master plan, especially with the timing of the lights, especially with the flow of the traffic, and what our pedestrian, as well as our car traffic is as well, too. And then lastly, I think, you know, each and every one of us is residents of the city. I think that we need to volunteer, if we can, in any capacity, to help, to look out for our students, to look out for our families. And, and really, I think that we also do need to cooperate and work very well together with the school board, because really, we're, we're one city. And we really want to take care of our students and our families to make sure everyone is safe.
Thank you. The next question will be first answered by Mr. Jason Lee. How will you address the problem of coyotes attacking pets and stalking people? How would you address the problem of coyotes attacking pets and stalking people? You have one minute.
Actually, three coyotes actually went to the backyard of my, my house and killed my chihuahua. So, despite that personal feeling, you know, we have laws protecting wild animals like coyotes. So, we have to follow the wild animal protection laws to the letter. But having said that, we basically, when you see the coyotes, I think we, we basically need to enforce the, inform the police, and you cannot just to self, rely on self-help. So, we, we need to get, get the, the appropriate authorities involved to basically repatriate the coyotes back to the mountains, back to where their habitat is. And so, to avoid any caroties or, yeah, to, to our pets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be answered by Mr. Michael Cowan.
Thank you so much, sir. You know, coyotes, you know, coyotes are, are really, you know, animals that they need to survive. And what I mean by that is that coyotes, they come to our homes, they come to our backyards, because their natural habitat is having issues. We talked about the drought, we talked about the fires. So, one of the things we need to do is we really got to think about, you know, how do we improve their natural habitat? The second issue is that typically, you know, when, we have a lot of pets in, in Arcadia. We love our pets. And one of the things we need to do is we got to make sure that, we got to really keep an eye on our pets. Because coyotes, you know, they do roam around in packs of two, maybe three at the most. But that's also another way. I think that this is an issue that is an ongoing issue that was addressed previously by city council before. And we do have to respect the decisions of the previous city council as well, too, with coyotes.
Thank you.
I feel like this is such a sad moment, because his dog was killed, our dog was killed in the middle of the morning by coyotes. They just jumped the fence while they were out, you know, like I said, the middle of the morning. The coyotes are here because there are resources here. And the resources in the hills, where they usually would be, have been, many of them destroyed by either fires or, and the drought. And so, they have come down into our community. They are not natural to our community. And, but they are looking for water, they're looking for food, and they're looking for a place to sleep. And if there are available resources for water, or if there's food left out with, you know, dog dishes, cat dishes, things like that, they will eat from there. And then, they do find places like vacant lots, or vacant buildings, or houses that are unattended, and very often, it's, we really need to cut down on giving them the opportunities to thrive in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be first answered by Mr. Michael Cowan. If elected as a council member, what would you do to ease ethnicity tension and division in our community?
Thank you so much, Dr. Wong. I mean, this is a really great question. And I think that one of the things we have to realize is, once again, we're 2022, we're all Americans. And what I mean by that is that we all live and love the city of Arcadia, because we choose to live here. And we're all neighbors, we're all friends. So, the most important that we need to do is we need to have positive dialogue back and forth with each other. Because really, what it comes down to, I think, is, is communication. We need to let each other know that we care for each other, we want to look out for each other, we want to live in the best community, because that's why we live here. And I think, you know, to help ease tensions, I think it's about a positive dialogue. And, and that is really, you know, the cornerstone of easing tensions, so that we all understand that we are all Arcadians, and we love our city.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Danielson.
I, I agree. I think, I think it starts in our smaller neighborhoods, where we are, again, knowing our neighbors better. And then having that spread out, where we're actually looking for ways to connect. I would like to see some more celebrations. I love a number of the celebrations that happen in Arcadia. And I think that helps to spread the culture and helps for there to be understanding. I think in some ways, we need to take cue from the kids, because the kids in our schools, they're able to get along. And, and that, if we can take maybe a lesson from them and understand that we are all here, we are all working for the same things. We want the same things for our children. We want the same things for our kids and for our families. And so if we share these common concerns, that we should be, we're able to work together and to get over those tensions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jason Lee?
Yes, uh, I think we need to educate our residents about different uh cultures, history um of different nationality and different ethnic groups in Arcadia through communication and dialogue. Uh, I am uniquely equipped to do this job because I am a demo. I can be the bridge between the Asian, Asian residents and the non-Asian residents uh in this, in this dialogue. So um, again, we just need to reduce the conflict, unnecessary conflict. We need to be united, we need to promote unity, harmony, and co-prosperity for all Arcadians, not for any particular real ethnic group. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, Mr. Michael Cow?
He, he already spoke. He spoke first. Okay. I should, I should go first, yeah.
Next one is
I should go first, yeah, yeah.
If elected, how is, how would you support the police department to include the, its support financially?
That's a great question. Um, we, we do support our police. Um, and it's shown by, and you know, for me, it's been approving budgets and some equipment and things that are coming up to provide them with. And just recently, we voted to get them body cameras, which have been very valuable already. Um, and also um ordering um equipment for the future. Um, the, we need to make sure that we are compensating them properly. And we need to have that with the police and the fire. Uh, we need to make sure that we are prioritizing, you know, the safety of our people because I think that's something that everybody can get behind. Um, but uh, other than that, actually, raising money um from the budget would be a contract issue that we really would like to address and, and really keep them in the forefront of our, of our, because where your, where your money is, is where your heart is.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jason Lee?
Yes, we need to uh further strengthen the police force. Uh, we need to continue fundraising for our police department. We need to mobilize uh our residents because Arcadia is a more affluent community. We have a lot of people who are relatively wealthier, who can afford to uh support and give financial support to our police. Uh, in the spring, I personally donated ten thousand dollars to our police foundation. Uh, so we need to continue to do that. And also, uh, we need to do everything we can to retain the best officers in our police force. Because again, Arcadia is a upper middle class community. We deserve better than, than average police officers in our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. This is um, Mr. Michael Cow.
Thank you, sir. So, as one of the directors of the Arcadia Police Foundation, um, you know, it's our task, because we want to volunteer, we are volunteering, to support our law enforcement. Uh, we fundraise uh for our, our police, uh whatever our police chief uh says that that he needs for the department to keep us safe, that's all we fundraise for. We reach out to the community. Our community is wonderful. I mean, everyone really cares about each other. And because of that, that's why our community has been extremely generous in supporting a law enforcement. But we need more help because our police officers need more help. The second thing is that, not just from a financial standpoint, our police officers need to feel valued. They need to have the respect that they deserve. And I think that that is something that, you know, we as residents need to set the tone to let them know that we care about them because they're protecting our safety. So I think it's so important that, you know, as public safety officers, firefighters, and police officers, they do a job that is so incredibly difficult, and we need to thank them every day if possible.
Thank you. The next question is to be answered first by Jason Lee. What is the biggest problem and weaknesses in the current city council? What is your plan to make the city council and the city government work more efficiently and effectively?
The biggest problem and weakness that exists in our current city council is that uh I think we can probably use more unity and more harmony. Uh, I think very often you will see deadlocked uh the city, you know, on, on the city council. That is not good for Arcadia, that is not good for the residents of Arcadia. So we all need to think about the, how to benefit the city, how to benefit Arcadia, not the um, the individual's self-interest. So, again, we just need to elect more uh basically council members who will promote harmony, unity, and co-prosperity on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. This is Michael Cow.
Thank you, sir. So, you know, our city is a city of fifty-seven thousand residents, made up of fifty-seven thousand different individuals and fifty-seven thousand different professions. I think that our city council would benefit from having diversity on the city council. I think that we need to have different individuals, different professions represented. For instance, like myself, I'm a healthcare professional. We, we really haven't had a healthcare professional since Dr. Chang, when he was our mayor. And I think that that adds value, that brings experience uh to the table because the reality is, is that everyone here is qualified. And so, but at the same time, we need to bring something else to the table and the, as well as being able to be able to communicate, know that we work together. Why? Because it's in the best interest and the benefit of our residents, who are each and every one of us. So I really think that this is definitely something attainable and achievable. And I think that this is why, you know, we have elections so that we can therefore vote uh for the person who we think is best representative uh for our city. Thank you.
Mr. Michael Daniels?
Well, since I'm on the council, um, and I, I think the thing that I have noticed is that there are some individual interests on the, on the council. And I think there is a certain divisive nature um that, that can go across the council. And um, it isn't always on racial lines, but I think sometimes the optics, when people look at things and they say, well, these people are voting for this, these people are voting for that. And a lot of that tends to get thrown into the mix. And um, I think the hardest thing on the, on the council is the lack of discussion. We can't really discuss things because of the Brown Act and the restraints that we have for um us being able to actually sit down and talk about something. We can only do that in a public meeting. And I think that that's the hardest thing. But I think electing people that are going to um be really looking for ways to bridge over the gaps that are in there, that's, that's what I would recommend is, is that you are looking for people that are looking to um communicate across the aisle.
Thank you. The next question is to be first addressed or answered by Mr. Michael Cow.
Didn't you just do the last one? It's my, it's my turn.
Your turn?
Yeah.
First of all.
I'm a role player.
Okay. Okay, do you think homeless hub, H U B, is a solution to Arcadia's homeless issue? We had a hub built at the Par Three last year, and it was closed due to complaints and budget.
Um, any, anything that is funded temporarily will probably fail eventually. Having a hub is a great idea in one way, in that you can localize services. The problem is, it has to have localized, you have to localize the people that, and it tends to push a lot of homeless people into one area. And wherever that community is, and since that was in District Five, wherever that community is, it causes problems. It caused problems for the, a royal uh cross-country team that was running by. And it caused issues around that area. And so finding an area to actually put the hub is, would be the problem. But it, localizing resources is terrific, but I don't think that hubs are the best idea for Arcadia.
Thank you. And next is uh Jason Lee?
Uh, the homeless hubs are only temporary solutions, the, basically, they're not as good. There should not be permanent solutions. So as I said earlier, the permanent solution should be uh again, uh with the county. The county has better resources and can handle the issue more cost-effectively. Instead of dedicating the task to, again, uh smaller, smaller cities like Arcadia and then doing it on a piecemeal fashion, like hub, hub here, a tiny home there. The county, again, could build some permanent large housing projects that would house most of the county's homeless people and build the necessary accessory uh facilities, such as clinics and hiring doctors, hiring psychiatrists that would offer them ongoing treatments and rehab centers, as I said, and maybe the farm, maybe the factory, maybe some offices there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. We're down to the last two questions from the audience.
Michael Cow has to, Michael Cow needs to respond.
Oh, you need to respond.
So, you know, we talked about this. Uh, the homeless crisis is a, it's a, it's a major issue in the state, the county, and the city. Um, and then we know that what the underlying issue really is, is we said about this, mental health, substance abuse, we need to get them treatment programs for that. We need to get licensed professionals, uh medical professionals, to really be able to do that. Um, the other is that we need to get them job training. Uh, and then because of that, a homeless hub really would not serve the purpose of helping them to get back on their feet, get them back into society because we want to look at the big picture. We want to make sure that we treat the homeless with respect. But at the same time, these are things that they need help with, and I think these are things that we should focus on. And I don't think that a homeless hub uh meets those criterias to, to be able to uh get them uh reintegrated back into society.
Thank you. All right, so the last two questions. And this is to be addressed as you are the last one answered, so it's um, next is Jason to be the first to answer this question. What is your view and position on mixed-use buildings in Arcadia? What is your view and position on mixed-use buildings in Arcadia?
Um, as Arcadia is getting more and more urbanized, and uh I think it is inevitable that mixed-use uh projects will be built in Arcadia. Uh, because also under the SB nine, under the state mandate, uh between twenty twenty-one and twenty, uh twenty-nine, Arcadia is required to build additional over three thousand units of housing. So the mixed-use projects are one of the ways to provide such additional units of housing to be in compliance with the state mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Michael Cow.
Thank you, sir. Um, you know, right now, Arcadia is a built-out suburban, suburban community. And what I mean by that, you know, we don't really have new lands that we can develop. Um, we really have to talk about, you know, how do we improve from low and, um, low intensity to higher intensity uses? And so, uh, one of the things that the housing element in the city needs, is addressing, is that it's addressing the housing needs. And because of that, we have to look at the fact that at least ten thousand individuals from disabled persons needs housing, seventy-two hundred people from elderly need housing. And so we really have to look at it where we have to do smart development. Uh, because of the fact that, uh, when we look at the RIN numbers, uh, you know, the city mandate, the state mandates that, the city, you know, is working on that. And right now, the housing element has been submitted uh to the state for that. And so that is something that we have to keep in mind, is that we just have to do smart development.
Mr. Daniels?
Um, as was stated, the, the state has mandated growth for our city. And because we're a community of homes, that's a problem because we don't have land available. Uh, it's not, it's very, very limited, which means our attempts to hit these benchmarks that the uh state is looking for means we need to go up and not down. So you're going to be seeing buildings that are taller. The um, the multi-use, which was the, the question had to do with multi-use. Multi-use buildings have the greatest tax advantages for the developers. Because, and in addition to that, um, they can avail themselves of the, some differential code requirements because they will be providing uh affordable housing in those. So if we, since we are trying to attract people to um meet the state's mandates, those, um, having those multi-use buildings are going to be the most financially um, the best for the developers to be building. So we're going to be seeing a lot more of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're down to the last question. And this one is first answered by Mr. Michael Cow. As a city council member, what strategy can you offer to work with the school board to enhance the education system experience?
Thank you very much, sir. That's a great question, and we're so fortunate, we have our school board member right here, uh, as well as our PCC trustee here as well too. So um, you know, one of the things that, when I was a professor at USC Kek School Medicine is, we always talked about, you know, how do we outreach to the community? How do we get our high schoolers involved, um, so that uh they get education on an academic level? And my goodness, we're so fortunate, USC now is part of the community, it's USC Arcadia Hospital. So as a city council member, because I was a professor and I'm in the culture of the hospital, uh, I think that I'm in a really unique position to be able to bring that resource to our school board, to our community, to be able to bring a top-level university, sixteen, if I remember last time, a top-level university into our school system. And that's something that I would uh be so excited to be able to bring about if I'm elected in a city council, is because of the fact that, you know, I would really be able to use my relationships and resources that I have, both from a USC standpoint as well as a hospital standpoint to help our community and our, our school system.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Daniels?
Um, as an educator, I, the Arcadia schools have been a major force in the success of this city. Um, the crime rates and uh the amount of issues that happen um very often don't happen here because of the forward-thinking of those students and the rigor of the school system. As a city uh official, I think developing partnerships between, and internships between the city and the high school, or the city and other facets of the school system would be terrific, as well as trying to get partnerships and internships between many of the local schools like PCC and um, you know, Cal Poly and some of the ones that are close to Caltech, um, so that the students could have additional opportunities to uh explore things that maybe would be, go beyond the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jason Lee?
Yes, we know that the uh schools fall into, under the jurisdiction of the school board. To interfere in decisions uh concerning the schools will be actually poaching. But having said that, uh, we, both the city council and the school board serve the But having said that, we, both the city council and the school board serve the same constituents. So we have the same goals, we have the same vision, I mean, the same objectives, to, again, serve our residents and their children in areas, I think we can collaborate, having said that, we can collaborate, collaborate in areas of like joint-use facilities, such as the gyms, and also the Arcadia High School Performing Arts Center. We can also promote efforts to fundraise for our schools, so that our schools will be well-funded in there, basically, in the, both the extracurricular activities and also the regular curriculum teaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we just have one more question coming in, so I thought maybe we could just take this one as well, and that would be the last. So we will start with Mr. Michael Danielson. How do you feel about the increase of population density as we have more multi-use buildings being built?
Everything that the state has, again, mandated that we have to grow. And the only way that's going to happen is those multi-use buildings and the buildings that are going up. And in trying to incorporate those things, we and the city have tried to lessen the impact that they have, to be very careful of traffic patterns and the disruption to the local neighborhoods or the local business areas. So the, the density is going to go up. Because they are near public transport, like the train system, things like that, there will be a slightly lower traffic flow around those areas. But it is kind of a hard thing, because the state is saying, you need to put more people in there, but then you need to cut water, you need to cut power and things like that. So those are the challenges that we're looking at going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jason Lee.
Basically, population is growing everywhere. Every country, the whole world, every state and every city, including Arcadia, is inevitable. It's just a fact of life. So there's nothing we can do about it, except we just need to have better control, controls of traffic, and better control of the resources that are needed to deal with the increase in population in our city. So we need to basically have expert studies and to have better programs, so that the additional population that is coming to Arcadia will basically enjoy the same high quality of life as the other residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have time with Mr. Michael Cow. You have one minute.
Thank you, sir. You know, we are, we are so lucky that we're so successful. And what do I mean by that? Arcadia is such an incredible place to live in the San Diego Valley. Everybody wants to live here, because we are a community of homes with wonderful people, great school system, great hospital, and most importantly, great residents. So this is, this is an issue that we have, is because of our success. And because of that, you know, we have to realize that population density is just something that is a factor. And we need to, like I said, talk about smart development, meaning that we have to do, follow the state rules. But at the same time, we do need to maintain the lovely culture that we have as a community of homes. So really, you know, this is something that I think that we're going to be continuing to address.
Thank you, Michael. Let's give all the candidates a round of applause. Now we have the last segment of this candidate forum, is the final remarks from the candidates. So each candidate, we have two minutes to give their final remarks. And we're taking turns, so Jason Lee, you will be the first to give the final remarks.
I believe I'm the most qualified candidate because of my education and because of my experience, training as an attorney. And I think I'm best suited for the job. I can hit the ground running without additional training on the job. As I said, basically, every single issue discussed and resolved at the city council meeting has a lot to do with law, just think of it. So again, I'm best suited. I already have that background, that training. I do not have to do more homework to catch up in order to perform my duties well. I basically be involved in Arcadia, I, I'm a local area, I was first VP of Arcadia Lions Club, I'm a pro bono attorney at the Arcadia Law Days for many, many years. So I have a record of public service in Arcadia. Besides, I am a homeowner in Arcadia. I'm a stakeholder in Arcadia. Arcadia matters much, much more to me personally, because of my, again, I'm basically very much invested in the future of Arcadia. So for these reasons, I believe I am, also I'm second retired, I have the time to volunteer on the city council. City council could, you know, demand twenty, thirty hours a week, easy. So I have the luxury of time to work for all of you. Thank you so much. So I hope I will be able to earn your votes in October that's coming up, and also November the eighth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jason Lee. Next is Mr. Michael Cow. You have two minutes, your final remarks.
This afternoon, you've heard from so many different candidates. But what separates me, well, it's my lifelong commitment to public service. So what do I mean by that? So let me remind you, I've served our country, defending our nation, as a United States Air Force veteran, Iraq, Afghanistan. I'm one of your city commissioners for our senior citizens, as well as being one of the directors of the Arcadia Police Foundation. And then lastly, I'm one of your cardiologists. I take care of you when you're sick. I help to make you better. Now, I am endorsed by the California Nursing Association, which represents a hundred thousand healthcare professionals. I'm also endorsed by the LA County Medical Association, which represents seven thousand physicians. And I'm also endorsed publicly by the Los Angeles County Association of Deputy District Attorneys, which represents eight hundred prosecutors in the county. What does that mean? That means that they know my commitment to public safety and health. You know, I have been volunteering, I am volunteering. And for me, this is what is most important, is you have to have a commitment, but you also have to bring in a fresh and new perspective as a healthcare professional. And that's what I bring to the table, a new voice, new ideas. I'm not a politician, I've never run for public office before. But at the same time, you know, I would be honored to have your vote, I would be honored to serve you, because that's what I've been doing my whole life. You know, I hope you can vote for me for the November eighth election for Arcadia City Council. And thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to speak with each and every one here, because I know that everyone came here because they care about our community. And we all love our community, we love Arcadia. Thank you.
So my final remarks from Mr. Michael Danielson. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to thank ACA for putting on this forum, because I think it's so important that we are able to talk and you get to know us better. I'd like to thank the gentlemen up here, and I wish Daniel Walkie were here, because I think, you know, when I'm looking at the races, I'm just so excited about the fact that in District Five, they're going to have a great person representing them, no matter who it is. I'm here because I have qualifications through being a union president and dealing with budgets and negotiations and things like that. I'm here because I've been in this, in this city for thirty-seven years, and I do have a record of volunteering and getting along with people and bridging cultural gaps and things like that, and inspiring young people, and that was my job, to inspire young people. This is a hard thing for me, because I'm not used to being, having the attention focused on me, I'm focusing on service and being a servant to the community. So I, I feel that my qualifications and the fact that I was already approved by the city council unanimously for this position, that they had faith in me and that endorsement. I'm going to say something, so I, I apologize ahead of time. 我的中文不好我是美国人你是美国人你是中国人你是台湾人 我们都是Arcadia人 我们是 I don't see city council for position, politics and prestige. I only want to continue serving, representing the people of Arcadia, making best decisions for our future together. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all three candidates to come and taking their time to share with us their qualification and their policy as a council member. And this concludes the first candidate forum for District Five. And I also want to thank all of you for coming here and supporting this event. Our second candidate forum for District Two and Three will be held this coming Friday, September thirtieth, starting at six forty-five PM in the evening. Please spread the words. Again, thank you for coming. And the candidates will stay around for about half an hour, to, for those of you who want to, still want to meet with them and talk to them. Okay? All right, thank you.